Already. I will call to order a regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. It is six thirty-two on February seventh twenty-two. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you will all join me in the Pledge Allegiance. Stand so I apologize, can't see me. I pledge allegiance.
To flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You know, we can do that in a room full of people without skipping a beat.
It's hard when you get the reverberations in your ears and all that.
I'm glad to know it's not just me. It's suddenly something we've been saying our entire lives becomes very difficult. All right. Next item is approval of minutes in your packet. You should have minutes from our regular meeting on January eighteenth and our January twenty-fourth budget meeting. So I would entertain a motion first for the January eighteenth meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of January eighteenth.
By Jim, is there a second? Seconded by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And that leaves our January twenty-fourth budget workshop meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the January twenty-fourth minutes as written.
Seconded by Jim, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is present to speak. If you are on the call and you would like to speak, you have the ability to unmute yourself. You are not required to be on camera. However, we welcome it. I ask that you state your name for the record and limit yourself to two minutes. Is there anyone present to speak? Don't all speak at once. I see who's on this call. It's not a quiet bunch. Okay, there'll be an opportunity at the end of the meeting if any of you so choose. Correspondence, you will see a list of correspondence in your packet. Any questions? They're all available here in the Selectmen's office. Excuse me, first Selectmen's report. I'll give you a status update on some items. Steve Grant for the Old Town Hall Septic. I don't have anything new to date. The school building committee last Wednesday, February second. The, at the meeting, Colliers was chosen as the owner's project manager for the school building committee. So that meeting simply took a vote to determine them. We did not start with specific items. How we'll move forward or where we're moving forward now that they're on board. Our next meeting will be February sixteenth. So I look forward to working with them and having a very robust conversation about the next steps for here in Wellington. The lots of projects, we had the commitment to fund, but no new updates as of yet. The Town Hall Basement Project, this is something that's been a long time coming. My predecessor had asked about this project multiple times. It came down to us needing to move forward with it because of mold in the basement. I'm happy to say that January twenty-eighth, the cleaning was completed and last week the concrete was poured. Service Master will be back in tomorrow to meet with Troy. Troy, are they doing another cleaning or are they just kind of going over things?
He's not sure. We're gonna do a walkthrough and he said if there was anything missed, then he would have his crew come back and clean what they missed.
So I want to thank Troy for taking on this project. And at the same time, for the patience of our staff and anyone who was here last week. Not only does any kind of construction project make it chaotic. The smells in this building between the cleaning of the building, the pouring of the concrete, the heater they use to cure the concrete made it pretty unbearable some days. So to our staff, thank you for, for working through that. And when I say unbearable, some people had to go home. The smell was. Yeah, not sustainable. So we've made it through. It is very nice for what was a dirt basement down there. It's not fantastic. No one's moving their office anytime soon. But thank you to Troy for heading up this very important project. The truck leases, we have now taken delivery of two out of the three new vehicles before F four fifty was delivered. I think it was the twenty-seventh. It was just before that snowstorm. And we're waiting for the F three fifty from, from Ford. And when I say from Ford, I mean Ford itself, not the dealer that we purchased it from. They still don't have a definite delivery date. And last week we were told that Ford still hasn't given us a build date. So while we were saying late February, March, it looks now like it'll be closer to summer. Troy, did you get any new information today?
No, I did not.
Yeah, so we'll keep you posted as to when that vehicle comes in. ARPA Commission, we met this afternoon. We have a full committee. Well, at the end of this meeting, we will have a full committee will be appointing the last person officially, although you did attend our meeting today, just could not vote. So we discussed how we would solicit, approve and prioritize submissions for ARPA projects. The committee meets every other Monday. So we met today. It's every other Monday, but due to the holiday on the twenty-first, our next meeting will be on the twenty-eighth. But then we'll keep that every other Monday from today. So we'll have two back-to-back meetings. And they are Mondays at one-thirty. Union negotiations, we're still waiting for the language and then it will go to the union to ratify and then to us. So we'll keep you posted. We welcomed a new staff member last week and I hope I say his name correctly. It's Michael Fitz Cordova is the new account analyst in the finance office. Donna, I think, off this, oh, no, she's still here. I know her office is very excited to have a full department running and Michael had a great first week with us. So we look forward to his tenure with the town. So if you happen to be in the finance office, stop and say hello. COVID nineteen update. Numbers going down in the state, how much of that is less transmission or less reporting now that there are a lot of home tests out there? Remains to be seen, but hospitalizations have gone down. So I think that's really important and that's a data point that the state's looking at. Closer than strictly number of tests reported. We have, as of last week, sixty-three percent fully vaccinated here in Wellington. So that was eighty-two more fully vaccinated individuals from our last meeting. And we've had an increase of sixty-seven COVID cases. I am happy to say we have not had another COVID death. So that is good news. Our residents who have had COVID have been able to recover. So in our case rate, which is, comes out every two weeks, as of last Thursday, was at sixty-five point eight. And at our last meeting, we were a hundred and twenty-three. So we had really peaked and we're starting to see that number come down. So these are positive pieces to COVID. I will tell you at a press conference this afternoon about four fifteen, the governor announced that the statewide mask mandates will end on February twenty-eight. And that towns and schools will be able to make decisions for their communities moving forward. I don't have any more specific details than what was shared in that press conference. So I'll keep you posted on that. We do not have a townwide mask mandate, although we've had the ability to. We have masks required in all of our town buildings. So that is something that we will need to discuss moving forward if you want to continue that. I will once again urge any residents five years old and older at this point to get vaccinated. We have still had masks and test kits made available to us from the state. But they were prioritized for vulnerable populations, first responders, schools and front-facing municipal staff. So we had the ability to once a week for the last couple of weeks and including this week, ask for test kits and masks if we needed them for those populations. And so masks and COVID tests are available for any Wellington resident if they're homebound, cannot drive, have a disability, which requires a reasonable accommodation. Jenny Arpen in Human Services is running that in conjunction with the Fire Department with Wellington One. So that someone is available twenty-four hours a day if they needed an accommodation. So someone will call Jenny's office. If it's a Saturday afternoon and she's not there, they'll get a message about where they can call and they have. And so I know this weekend, the Fire Department took tests out to individuals. Jenny has had folks contact her. So that was a requirement in order to get these test kits and masks in these last couple of rounds is that we have, we have to give a very specific contact and it must be available twenty-four hours a day. So I want to thank Jenny and then our EMD and our partners at Wellington Fire Department for assisting in that process. Otherwise, I'm not sure how we could stand up a twenty-four hour a day availability. It would certainly be difficult. So again, I mentioned that we'll need to talk about mask mandate here in town buildings. And then it's a good opportunity for us to discuss our meetings. We have until April thirtieth where hybrid meetings are still an option. We had gone hybrid with the increase in cases. We have now moved back to this fully virtual. So in the coming weeks, we'll watch these numbers and consider whether or not we want to go back to meeting in person. But my recommendation right now, although the numbers have dropped, they are still considerably higher than they had been before the holiday season that unless someone felt strongly, I would like us to continue virtual at least through the end of this month. And then I think it's worth seeing where the numbers are and how we feel about going back in person. Comments, questions?
Sounds, sounds okay, I guess.
And we'll continue to share the information about tests available. Oh, I said schools. So some of the tests we make available are to the schools and then they distribute those on their own. We're really looking at a different population. And this week will be the last of those distributions and then, excuse me, DPH will handle any needs for our vulnerable populations going forward. So I will move on to Public Works. Troy is with us.
All right, we've emptied the trash at the park still. We're washing the trucks constantly after each snowstorm. We've made some repairs to the fleet, hydraulic hoses, a couple of cutting edges, windshield wipers, the normal stuff. We've cleaned up the sightlines and intersections after that weekend storm. We changed light bulbs, we cracked clocked the stairs going down in the town hall. We changed air filters in the town office building. We patched holes around town, cleaned off catch basins due to the storm with the rain. And we've been chipping some brush around town that we had some limbs come down. So we chipped that up and that's kind of been about it.
He says that about it, but it seems like it's snowstorm after ice storm after snowstorm after ice storm. So while your list seems relatively small, there's an incredible amount of work happening right now and it's the job our Public Works crew signed up for. But to say we appreciate the twenty-four hours they put in, in the last big storm is an understatement. So kudos Troy to you and your staff that our roads were in great shape. I felt confident that everyone could go back out on the road. Last Sunday morning, we could open the transfer station and people were safe. So thank you to them. It makes, it makes for really long days, but they work hard. So thank you. All right, we have nothing under old business unless one of you has an item you want to see added. All right, I'll move on to new business, tax refunds. Got a couple here. I will move to refund CoreLogic, an overpayment in the amount of two thousand six hundred twenty dollars and twenty-three cents. Seconded by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I move to refund JP Morgan Chase a certificate of correction in the amount of three hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-six cents.
Second.
Seconded by Jim, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I move to refund Toyota Lease Trust, a certificate of correction in the amount of four hundred twenty-one dollars and six cents.
Second.
Seconded by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to appointment to the American Rescue Plan Act Commission. I will move to appoint Stuart Fisher, a current member of the Wellington Parks and Recreation Commission as a member of the Town of Wellington American Rescue Plan Act Commission, effective immediately, expiring once the charge of the committee has completed.
Second.
Seconded by Liza, any discussion? Mr. Fisher is new. I think he's new to Wellington as well, new to the commission. He may not be new to town. New to the Parks and Rec Commission and was happy to be appointed to this committee and he did attend our meeting today. So we look forward to working with him. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I move to appoint Patricia Phillips as a regular member of the Conservation Commission, effective February eighth, twenty-twenty-two, to fill a vacancy expiring December first, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Seconded by Jim, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I know while we talk about this appointment, Robin, were you prepared to discuss the, the other adjustments? I don't know if you're still waiting for a response.
Can you hear me?
We can. Yes.
Sorry. I have not had a chance to, um, connect with Ryan.
Okay.
He emailed me, but between my meetings and such, I have not called him real time.
Okay, so I won't, I won't add this one.
Okay, all right. I will have it for next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Robin's discussing some potential appointment adjustments that have been discovered and so it was possible, we were gonna add that to the agenda, but we will look at that at our next meeting. All right, that brings us to our last item, new business, which is discussing the budget. If you were with us on the last call, we were having a hearty but difficult discussion about our proposed budget. Which is, as we began our last meeting, sitting at a six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar increase, we have proposed since then, a few adjustments to take a look at. And I apologize Jenny, we, because of the time, we cut off the discussion we were having about your department. And, and what we were specifically discussing, discussing were the increases in the Human Services salary, director salary and proposed additional hours for the assistant. And if we were to make a formal request to the ARPA Commission to fund a portion of those and kind of phase that into this budget to really eliminate some of the larger increases and work it into a sustainable plan. I will tell you that ARPA is certainly the recommendation made to us is to use these for one-time funds so that you are, we received a one-point-seven million dollars, right? And so that we don't see an increase in our operating budgets of an additional one-point-seven million dollars. But some things, because specifically because of COVID are things we're going to need and don't know that they're going to go away anytime soon. And I think these are two areas in Human Services that, that fall into that case. So we could make the case there. And if Jim and Liza, if you would be in agreement, I can make an official proposal to the ARPA Commission for those items. And, and discuss. And if there's action taken there, then we would know and could adjust our budget accordingly. We could ask for the full amount and then a smaller amount next year. Or my plan I put to you before was a quarter on the operating budget, three-quarters in ARPA. And then next year we'd look at any additional increase, half being funded by ARPA and half by the operating budget. So that in the third year, we would be paying for it in full and ease ourselves into that a little bit.
I think that plan, Erica, makes sense for a starting point. I think also some of the other conversations we have around what we choose to keep or cut from our proposed budget will maybe impact exactly what we request ARPA to cover. Or what we request from that committee to dedicate towards this position. But I think that makes sense. You're, you know, asking for three-quarters of it upfront and then phasing it in.
Yeah, I, I agree the, the, I, I wouldn't want to see it all put in all at once at ARPA. It'd be better to phase it in if you were to use it that way.
Yeah, I, I did too, Jim. Simply because we know this is something we'd be looking to budget for in the future. It doesn't make sense for them to budget all of it. We gotta, you know, kind of take some onus of it and be realistic about what the impact to our budget is moving forward. And then, so that says to me, are, is this something we want to, we are planning to include in our budget regardless of what ARPA says? So that's the bigger conversation we have to have. We're talking about taking a very part-time position in Human Services and boosting that to a thirty-hour-a-week position that includes senior center responsibilities.
Yeah, I think given the, the, the current like situation we find ourselves in, I don't think we have much of an option. You know, even if we, even if somebody could give a good justification for not doing that, I think the position we find ourselves in with like not having the, the volunteer at the senior center going forward, there needs to be, there needs to be some organized and over. And some, somebody who has oversight, right? Over, over the work that happens there. So I, I think for me, there's not much of a question about whether we should be pushing that forward. I think regardless of what, whether or not ARPA, the ARPA Committee agrees to fund it in the way that you proposed.
Thank you. Jim, anything additional?
I know, the only thing I was wondering is we did have a volunteer at the senior center who wanted to do this and, and, you know, and give of their time. I'm just curious, is there anybody else who's interested in doing that at the senior center? Anybody come forward?
So I will tell you, this was born out of the seniors coming to me.
Okay.
We think it's time the town took this on. I think they were incredibly fortunate to have an individual that volunteered for a job. A regular job at the senior center and she's missed. This only came up after she chose to, to retire. But the conversation stemmed from the seniors.
Okay, so they approached. I, I was just curious for that backstory. I didn't, I didn't know that. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
It also might be helpful to know that, um, the week of January fourteenth, I took vacation and I had to schedule who was going to open the center every single day. Because if I'm not there, it doesn't get opened. So once again, I'm just putting it out there. This is the urgency of, of having someone in this role because I can't always be there. I have a department to run. I have meetings. I have things offsite.
And so basically.
And you're allowed to take vacation.
I am, thank you.
And that, what, what it told Jenny and I is the seniors didn't have a succession plan in place. Look, we all knew Gene wasn't going to stay there for forever, but I, there was just no planning for it. And I think some of that comes from understanding that they don't have a member who wants to work at the senior center. They want to enjoy the senior center. And this is an incredibly dedicated group of folks who make up the, the executive committee at Seniors Inc. and their active volunteers who regularly volunteer in our Human Services Department. You'll see them every Wednesday, whether they're giving bread out here or Food Share Week, they're out here, rain, sleet, snow. And so they are dedicated to giving back, but I just don't think, they just don't have someone who wants to work at the senior center. So yes, this was a hundred percent driven by them. I do have some other concerns about, you know, a staff member at the senior center being responsible to a five-oh-one-C-three at some point. So, and I've had that conversation with them. I think there needs to be a bigger conversation about the makeup of, of how the senior center is run. And so we're having those discussions as well. This is a first step there. And this person would be responsible to the Human Services Department and to the town and, you know, back to, to the Board of Selectmen at the end of the day. And not to the seniors. They work in conjunction with them, but they won't work for them. They will, will work with them. So I don't want that to sound as harsh as, as it does. It's not meant to be. But it just adds another interesting dynamic that will need to be addressed. And so we started that conversation. Jenny presented her budget separately to the Board of Finance last week and one of the questions they asked was whether or not the seniors with the money that they do have could pay for some of this. My response was in their private funds, it's certainly not sustainable. So I didn't see that happening. But certainly it, it could be something we look towards and ask, but I, I think ARPA might be a way to ease this into our budgets. All right. So we're with budget. If I'm just gonna throw some things out with some of the adjustments we made in Troy's budget. Not adding in part-time summer help yet, but taking out that labor position for identification purposes, taking out the road maintenance work. If we are able to find, let's say, half of the money he's asking for, for trees and we can do that this year. And I take that out. And let's say we cut how much CIP put in their plan. That's a big what-if. We'd have to take a look at that whole plan. And let's say we took out a two-hundred thousand dollars of it. That would bring us down still to a six-point-seven-one percent increase. And I zeroed out my calculator. I'm just gonna have to do that math again real quick, which is still, which is a two-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-five-dollar increase.
So what is that? I know it's, it's impossible to predict exact dollar amount of what our revenue is going to be. But what does that sort of typically compare to what our anticipated revenue would be? Like, are we, are we looking at a situation where there's absolutely no way to absorb that increase with what we currently collect or is it something that could be squeezed in to what we currently collect with? You know, maybe some adjustments to how much we put in the rainy day funds or whatever.
Do you have an answer for that? We haven't seen a whole revenue projection yet. We have, I will tell you on Friday, late on Friday, after things went out to you, I did meet with Walter regarding the grand list. And so we are looking at an increase in our grand list of three-point-three-seven, which could produce additional tax revenue of four-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars. But remember, this is just our piece of the entire town budget. So it's, it's hard to give an exact.
It's too early to tell, actually. You gotta wait for the rest of the departments to come in and.
Yes.
I think, I think that's the answer.
Well, but it helps with giving us an idea though about like, if we're, if we're looking at an increase that's seven-hundred-thousand dollars to our budget and the projected increase for the town's revenue is only four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, then we know for a fact that no matter what we do within that number, we're over, right? So that. So that, like, it does give us somewhat of an idea of. I mean, I know it doesn't take into account what other people are going to ask for and increases in other areas. But it does let us know if we're greatly overshooting what our, what our revenue would be.
This, this is the first increase I've heard in the grand list in a long time. I thought it'd be like a little bit, but three percent I think is wow.
I feel good about it and then uneasy. And let me tell you why. Most of that increase, a lot of that increase is crumbling foundations that were repaired and went back on. Motor vehicle went up considerably across the board, about twenty-two percent. But if you heard the governor's proposal last week and I haven't seen the details of the proposal to to different tax cuts, and one of them would be to hold motor vehicle taxes across municipalities to twenty-nine mil. We're at twenty-nine point nine. Where's the point nine that we currently have? Let's assume there's no mill increase in Wellington. Where's the rest of that going to come from? So our increase just got cut and then some. So I'm waiting to hear what that proposal is and then see where with legislation that goes. It could be nothing. It could be something. I have already indicated to our state rep and our state senator will be my next phone call, that unless there's some hold harmless at the town of Wellington, that could be significant revenue loss. Significant. I understand wanting to give back. But it makes me a little bit nervous without hearing or seeing any language on where the difference in those tax revenues would come from. So I'm holding steady, listening as the session opens on Wednesday to see where this discussion goes. But right off the bat, we'd lose point nine mils on every motor vehicle tax.
I'm glad you're reaching out against that. That's.
I mean, that's what they're there for. I, I, it just.
Yep, you're right.
A, a tax break to residents, motor vehicle residents, I'd be in favor of, on the backs of municipalities would be detrimental. And so all of it, it would then fall to our property owners. And, you know, it's just, it's not sustainable. So I'm curious to see what the language is. So I want to see what that language is, but I've started to talk with our, you know, our reps about, you know, where we stand and, and how we think Wellington specifically should be supported. So we'll keep an eye on that. But to your point, Liza, there's, the revenue is really up in the air as that discussion goes. And the state finishes their work after we finish our budget work.
So we could be making decisions and then have it all shot to you know what, two, three weeks after we pass a budget.
Sure. But I think by the time we get down that road, we'll have some idea where this is going. We've been down this road before with TRB discussions. I think this is going to be a hot topic. We're talking about a, a potential cut to many, many towns. Look, if your mill rate is twenty-six, it doesn't affect you. You, you know, you're still where you're at, but anything over twenty-nine mils, those towns are looking at cuts. And we're looking at small towns. So, you know, even some of the bigger cities. So let's hope that the discussion is robust and that we have a better idea before we get through this budget process. But I'm sure our Board of Finance as well will be holding that information closely. So, so when we say it's really hard to give revenue, I think this year it's even harder. All right. So we've given Donna some direction on what we want to cut. And I know you're, the information you're looking for, I'm gonna work out those numbers so that we can get you that as well. I'm going to propose to ARPA, the ARPA Commission phasing in some of those salaries. Any other adjustments or cuts? Look, I say this all the time. Doesn't have to just be cuts. I'm not sure we want to go in the other direction. But if you see something in here you don't feel is adequate, let's talk about it.
I like to talk about something you mentioned at, at an earlier session. Conex boxes. I understood those to be shipping containers. That's, that's why, that's how I learned them. I guess in the old days they were called Conex boxes. Do we already have one or, and we're saying we're buying another one or?
Yes, so.
What's the plan with that one?
Parks and Rec has one. So if you've been to the town hall lately, you see one outside here. That belongs to Parks and Rec and they've kept their equipment at the pond in that. So they bought that last year and that we borrowed that from them so that we could put the materials that had been in the basement in there. So that will go back to Hall's Pond for Parks and Rec. Troy purchased one as well. He has asked in this budget for an additional one. Troy, you want to touch base on the?
Basically, that's basically for an eviction. When we have an eviction, like right now, we have all our lawn mowers, all our paving equipment, all that stuff in that Conex box. When there's an eviction, now we have to pull it all out because we hold the stuff for fifteen days. Most of it's junk, but it has to stay dry and stuff. So it's gonna go up at the transfer station and then that's where you're gonna put the stuff.
And, and it turns out that's, Conex boxes are, are like really hard to come by. That, that's part of this supply chain shipping thing is, is my understanding. And, and so maybe it was easy for you guys to get one a, a year or two ago. Do you have any, have, have you at least informally looked? And there you said, I, I think it's gonna be ten grand or something like that. You picked out some number, but is it really gonna be that amount or?
Uh, well, last year Parks and Rec bought theirs for eight thousand. So I added a little percentage onto what that was. So you're looking at probably ten thousand.
And you think that's probably, you think that's a good number then?
It's, yeah, right around, yep.
Okay. And I, I, I know we're supposed to hold things for fifteen days and then the town has the ability to sell or auction that material off. But is that, is that practically what happens or?
Uh, basically we post it and there is an auction date. No one shows up. And then we take and bring it to the transfer station and get rid of it.
Okay. Okay.
We haven't had anyone to show up to the auction, but we are bound to hold them.
And yeah, I, I, I understand. I was educating myself on this whole process here of, of what was involved. You know, including boxes and just curious whether we, you know, escalated a little bit for the supply chain issues. Looks like we did all that. Okay, Troy, thank you very much.
Yeah, and you know, this is a useful item. Depending on how evictions go. We kind of had a run on them, but then people have the opportunity to make good before the date. And then they, either the eviction doesn't happen or within the fifteen days they get their stuff back. But I can tell you, we've had some things where the items were less than desirable. This is before Troy had a Conex box, less than desirable to house inside our garage. But we have to, right? We're obligated to keep them. And so we're trying to avoid that interaction with some things. Cause you don't know what you're gonna get. We could go and have ten evictions and have nothing. They could get all their stuff out before eviction day. Or, or not. So while I think it's necessary, it is probably lower hanging fruit for us.
No, I was just curious. That's all I. Yeah, I, I did follow up. It looks like it comes up at the legislature every now and again. You know, some smaller towns like us say, hey, why are we paying for all this stuff? So.
Yeah.
But it hasn't gone anywhere in the last ten years or so.
No, it doesn't. And I think some towns, you know, like, like they may pay for storage. And, you know, it, it's costly. And, you know, we send someone out there the day of the eviction. It's an undue burden, another unfunded mandate on towns and cities. So. All right. Anything else you want to talk about in reducing this? We'll do another run, uh, unless you give me something that you want to see removed, altered and see what that looks like. And then I hope, and I'll leave this to Donna. Her department is feverishly working on. Just want to keep reminding you, again, I know it, you got it just before the meeting. In the days when we were in person, it would've been on the table waiting for you. Donna works on our budget, CIP and Board of Education budget simultaneously while doing every other reporting that needs to be done and then some in her office. So which we don't want to work in seven days a week on this. So you may not get it until just before the meeting, but as we get information, we'll share it with you. But Donna, do you think the salaries will be shored up by our next meeting?
Yes, when is the next meeting?
Kelsey? Oh, wait a minute. I'll turn around and look at my calendar.
Okay.
Do we really not have another budget meeting scheduled, Kelsey?
We do not.
We do not have another budget meeting scheduled, folks. And I will remind you, I, I, you see the back of my head because I'm looking at the calendar. We are scheduled to go before Board of Finance with our budget on Thursday, March third, so the first Thursday in March. So if we were to have an approved budget before that meeting, they like to have it a week ahead of time. They like, but I, you know, we need to make sure we get them a right budget, not fast. We would typically look at voting on this budget on our next meeting, which is Tuesday, the twenty-second. Do we want to have a budget meeting next week? Next Monday is Valentine's Day, if that means anything to anyone else.
Is that I, I am running a program at my other job. So I'm booked until like nine PM next week. So.
Totally free at nine PM. Um, you know, we could look at, I have CIP on Tuesday. I'm not gonna lie. There's another time. Someone wants to throw one out there. I do have another meeting Tuesday and two on Wednesday. But if there's another time of day.
I mean.
My, my guts telling me we should meet one more time bef- before the twenty-second.
Me too.
Well, yeah.
It's my thinking.
Is daytime at all possible for either one of you?
Virtually and like during some lunch hours is ideal if I'm doing it during a workday. Yeah. But I can also do something either first thing in the morning or like later on in the, in the afternoon, like three thirty to four thirty or something and take an hour off of work. So.
So would Tuesday be an option here? And Liza say that Monday she has a program at work. So I don't suppose would be when she'd want to take off of work, Tuesday, the fifteenth.
Are you talking middle day or?
Like three thirty?
Uh, three thirty.
In the morning.
Later in the day is better for me, if we were gonna do it on Tuesday.
Is three thirty later enough?
Uh, four o'clock is better later. Four o'clock is better for me on Tuesday.
Then can I ask if we look to Wednesday? Wednesday or Thursday? Cause that puts me kind of late for other things that I have on Tuesday.
Either of those days are fine for me.
All right. Wednesday I have a meeting at six thirty. But if we want to do.
Like a five thirty?
It gives us an hour.
Yeah, Wednesday's.
So let's plan for Wednesday, the sixteenth at five PM. And see if we can't make some significant progress. We'll get some things to you. Once again, I say, I hope at our next meeting, we'll be discussing the CBA. And then the numbers in our salary will be firm. They are not until that has been finalized. Just keep that in mind.
Have we heard any update from legal on, on, on what they're doing or?
I know the two parties are going back and forth with language. So there's progress. I've seen a draft. That helps. So.
Okay, so, so they are.
There is actually language, yes. And he's probably tired of hearing me ask, but I keep asking. So I hope for.
Tell, tell me you're getting regular inquiries from there. You're the new selectman. There you go. I'm happy to take the blame on that one.
I know it's I, and I'm happy to, to take it as well, Jim. What I keep saying is we're in the middle of budget and we should be talking about real numbers at this point. So it's almost a year later. So it's time. But we are making progress. So with, with that, sorry, remember we're in the middle of a regular meeting. Any other budget discussions? If you have any questions or things you want to know between now and then, please forward them to Kelsey so we can work on getting you the information. Present to speak. Is there anyone still on the call with us who would like to speak? If so, you can unmute yourself and choose whether or not you go on camera. Going once, going twice. I look at these names. This is not a quiet bunch. All right. We don't take it personally. Good and welfare. All right, go please. I definitely have.
I only have, I only have one thing. And I don't know if this is good or welfare. I, I do actually occasionally read through the correspondence. I saw Mr. Tullis provided an engineering report to the library a, a couple of meetings back. And that was a scary thing. The library has a lot of maintenance requirements, a lot of masonry repairs, a lot of water sealing and damage. I, I hope that's finding its way into the CIP committee somehow or perhaps the library budget.
I'm not sure about their budget, Jim, but nothing from the library was submitted for CIP. So that has been asked about. It came up at Board of Finance last week. So let's stay tuned because I think we all have the same.
So I saw it and I went, ye, you know, I'm thinking that's gotta be expensive. So, and I, I'm, I was hoping that I would see that somewhere. Okay, thank you.
And that's the problem that we're facing. That's a problem we face every single year.
That's right.
Far more needs than money to cover them.
And so I'm happy to hear that you read the correspondence list. That's, that's what I got. That's what I took from that. So kudos. Kelsey appreciates that. All right. I will remind folks that Mobile Food Share is here every other week. They will next be here next Wednesday, the sixteenth. Oh, no.
Yes, that's correct.
Next Wednesday, the sixteenth. I wrote it twice. From eleven to eleven thirty. So it is open to all residents. And it is, it goes beyond just the town of Wellington. How many towns come to Food Share here, Jenny?
Any town can come.
Oh, any town. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So it's, it's open to anyone, but specifically any Wellington resident, no requirement. You're asked of, you're asked nothing when you come through to Food Share. If you can, please continue to support our small businesses and restaurants, both here in Wellington and our local area. CIP and Board of Finance are still in need of a recording secretary. Our very own Kelsey is doing triple duty. And if anyone's interested, please contact the selectman's office. The second installment of property taxes and the supplemental motor vehicle taxes were due without penalty last week on February first. So anything that's paid now will have interest accrued going back. And so just so you're both aware, I shared this with Board of Finance on Thursday. As of last Thursday, we have collected ninety-six point four eight percent of expected taxes. So we are more than on target to meet our ninety-nine percent budget. So kudos to the work happening out of the revenue office. And just a reminder that masks are required in all town buildings regardless of action vaccination status. And that once again, I'll put the plug in. If anyone had, in Wellington has a disability. If you're homebound, you can't drive and you need a reasonable accommodation and are in need of a COVID nineteen test kit or masks. Please reach out to the Human Services Department and the phone number will appear in our minutes as well. And someone will get you anytime, any day. All right. Anything else, Liza or Jim? All right.
Thank you, Kelsey, for doing all those minutes for all the, the Board of Finance and the CIP. That's very challenging.
There are also lots and lots of meetings with budget season happening. So encourage people to go to our website and see when those meetings are to stay informed about how the town is planning to spend your hard-earned tax dollars. And that School Building Committee is moving in a forward direction to bring a project, a potential project to the town. And so I encourage folks to follow that process and speak i- if they feel necessary. So with that, no other business. I will make a motion to adjourn at seven twenty-one. Third, you can pick who it goes to. All right. All those in favor? I, thank you, folks. Have a good night.
Okay, good night.